Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. We will open our meeting and call our meeting to order. Is there approval of the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak?
Yes, President Whitaker.
I will vote yes. The motion passes four zero. Amy, are there any public comments regarding? There are no public comments regarding closed session items. So we will recess to closed session and return at 6:00 PM. Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. We welcome back to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. We are reconvening to open session. We did take action in closed session and we're so excited that the board took action to approve the appointment of Ms. Pamela Macy as a special education local plan area director with a vote of four zero by trustee Kuziak with a first motion and trustee Rayman with a second motion. We can't wait to meet Ms. Macy. And trustee Raymond, would you please read the mission statement?
Okay. We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you, trustee Raymond. I will now read our public comment instructions. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requested everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak form or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will either come to the podium up front to speak or be unmuted during your turn and will be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re muted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to thirty minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. With that, I'm excited to have Indiana Chilton, our new board member with us tonight.
Welcome to your first board meeting. What's going on in our schools?
Thank you. Um, okay, so we've been doing a lot of back to school stuff. Thank you. Especially with the leadership class. We started on the weekend of July twenty eighth, we had a leadership retreat in Valley Springs. And we just did a lot of bonding games. There was a lake. We could swim and stuff. It was really fun and that was the first time we did an away retreat for, I think, four years. Our last year's seniors were the only ones who had done it, so. Um, it was really beneficial and the class came together today already super bonded, so I think that's really gonna help. And then at the high school, we had orientation that the link crew put on for the freshmen. So it's just basically a big assembly with all of the freshmen and the link crew leaders gave tours of the campus and they did get to know you games with their freshmen. And then like I think they could go to their lockers and see where all of their classes are gonna be. And then leadership also worked registration. Um, yeah, we basically just handed out textbooks and then we sold stuff at the student store and ended up making almost $3,000 for the leadership class. And then the same for sports as well. And we started this new thing this year called the freshman or the sports pack. So if they purchased it, they got this thing called the den pass and it gets you in for free to all of the games at the high school. And then you also get an ASB card with it, which gets you discounts on the dances. And that was really beneficial. We saw a lot of sales in that, so we're hoping to get more um, student participation at our games. And then also over the summer, me and Quentin went to CADA camp, which is the California Association of Directors of Activities. And that was at UC Santa Barbara, so we got to stay in the dorms and eat in the dining halls. Um, me and Quentin loved it. There is a little over twenty schools, some were even from Chicago, so that was cool, but most of them had like fifteen or twenty students, but ours was just me and Quentin. So we were kind of scared at first, but um, we ended up meeting with a lot of new schools and hearing a lot of ideas and even like stuff about their districts, so that really helped us and we definitely brought a lot of that to our leadership retreat and then also just activities that we want to put on campus. And what we want to do moving forward with student development, because a lot of other schools do things outside of their leadership classes with athletics and clubs, like they send them to camps too, so we thought that was really cool and that could be really beneficial. We're getting leadership more connected with the community at CDHS. And yeah, that's about it.
Thank you so much. And pretty soon you'll get to have your first vote, so get ready. Um, preferential, correct. Superintendent Amati?
Great meeting and sitting down with Indiana. Awesome. Uh, so first day of school, I just want to say it's been an amazing day. Um, it, it just smooth opening. Kids are happy to be there. Our awesome teachers and staff are ready to receive them. Um, so we divided up and visited. Every school got at least two or three of us saying, hi, how's it going? Um, everything's going really, really well. Um, just the campuses look beautiful. Our custodians and maintenance workers have worked really, really hard over the summer uh, to prepare. Um, as we walk through classrooms, teachers are doing a great job welcoming kids, going over routines, and that's really important. Because no matter how many times you've been to school and you've started school, it's always nice to have that opportunity to kind of know where you're going, what the expectations are and how you'll be supported. Um, and then professional development day was fabulous. I just want to thank Ms. Rishichi and Educational Services for doing such a fabulous job, the workshops. I have a copy of it. I'm actually going to share it with you separately, but just and many of the workshops actually were taught by our own awesome teachers and staff. Um, just a great day and we started at the CFA um, where, um, you know, they, they were welcomed by our board president, our CVTA president and and CSEA president and and myself, and then we kind of cheered for this years of service and then we did go to all the schools and gave out their certificates and their pins on uh, the teacher workday so that we can, so that we do that first off. Um, but it was just a great, great experience. In addition to that, um, our new teachers actually this year, usually they have one day. Um, so uh, Dr. Zamora's team HR works with uh, new teachers, gives them a lot of great information. But I just love the diversity of our teachers that we've seen, highly qualified, amazing people who've come here. Um, and then the day before that, new teachers actually got to work with Educational Services. And of course, they had the professional development day. We did have a wonderful barbecue with our summer, people who work over the summer and mainly our custodians and maintenance and and people like that. It was great. Um, in those departments, we had over a hundred people, I think, um, Amy. Um, and this time we actually did not barbecue. We gave business, uh, because we had a grant, we gave, uh, we actually had Canyon do um, uh, cater and everyone loved it. I think they thought they did a better job than me.
You guys did a great job.
No offense. But it was really great and and we obviously all of us kind of get certificates and give out to them. So um, just wanted to let you know that CVRA, the um, you finished the process here, but on September twelve at four thirty, Alameda County. Oh, time is not confirmed, but on the twelfth and we'll, and as soon as they confirm, we'll advertise it. Uh, but at on the twelfth, they will be here. Alameda County Office of Education will be in this room. I'm actually having their meeting do here and to approve our. And then Jonathan Salt and Christopher and I will present, so it would be great. Just it's on your, um, on your calendars as well. And um, our clinic uh, building looks wonderful. It's done. Um, just wanted to update everybody. Um, the building is finished and ready to be occupied. The furniture and equipment is ready to be delivered and installed. Um, the health educators and supervisors uh, did a table, uh, tabled all three days for CBHS registration, handing out uh, flyers and talking with families so that they are aware. Um, they also hosted a breakfast um, a lot like a couple of days ago and uh, for all of the Castro Valley High School staff and the teacher on the teacher workday. Um, and then we have a tentative family night presentation for August thirtieth, but it's still tentative until they kind of pin that down. The first one will be virtual um, and recorded in case someone did not attend. We are, um, we did uh, receive our check for Fremont Bank. I am still working with Eden ownership to see if we can get any funding and um, and supervisor Miley met with us to see if there's a possibility of us getting any funding from uh, the county and that conversation is ongoing. So that was my.
Thank you, Superintendent Amati. We will move on to item six, California School Employees Association and Castro Valley Teachers Association reports. Amy, is the CSEA president Connie Hill on the line? With that, I will welcome our CVTA president Mark Malatonic to the podium. Welcome, Mark.
Um, yeah, so it's been a while, guys. Um, uh, as you guys know, over the summer, we didn't do too much, but we did have a booth at Pride. Um, the folks that attended Pride said that it was a great day, beautiful weather and um, just a wonderful event. Uh, members of our executive board went to the new teacher orientation on Friday and we met the new crew. Um, and it was really nice just to see the enthusiasm of our newest members. Um, it does, um, you know, some of those members are replacing um, veteran teachers and permanent teachers that have gone to neighboring districts. That is a little disheartening. Um, you know, when we have folks that leave to go far away, that's one thing, but when they're going to San Ramon, to Fremont, to Livermore, to Hayward, um, I think that that does good, I hope, um, maybe uh, is a cause for reflection. Um, and we did definitely enjoy the first professional development day. I had a lot of teachers come up to me and say, it's nice that it was on before school. Uh, traditionally, we've had professional development days mid-year, maybe both in one semester, you know, whatever. Um, but having them, um, having them before school really just kind of set the tone. We don't jump in, you know, immediately after one day, uh, one workday, so um, that is something hopefully that will continue in the next few years. Um, what else do I have to report? For a second, I was gonna try to do this just without looking at. See here. Ah, um, so and then I just want to end just by saying that a lot of times, you know, we do talk about how awesome and great we are and that's great, but I do feel like when I come up here, I'm the bearer of different news and so, um, and I don't think that our members in general are like really upset or miserable, but there are things that just could be better and communication is one of them, working together is one of them. One of the reasons why we have the calendar that we have this year is because we work together. Um, and we, we built this calendar that hopefully um, we could just do status quo next year after we, after we, we um, survey our members, but um, just, I'm just gonna leave you to just one example, just something to reflect upon. So last year, the end of last year, um, our counselors were informed, our high school counselors, our CBHS counselors were informed that they were gonna get some help and that our students were gonna get some help. There was gonna be a sixty percent position that would be created at the high school to help out with EL students, with Puente students, with students in general that would, that would be in need and a sixty percent was offered to one of our members. That member took a different position. He took a position for a counselor, a permanent counselor that went to San Ramon. So the counselor that was here last year, he's currently in San Ramon counseling. This woman that was offered the sixty percent took his job at one hundred percent. Once she did that, that sixty percent went away. So that help for our EL students, that help for our Puente students, that help for those students that are most in need is just gone. It wasn't posted. They didn't seek candidates, nothing. Yesterday, they're like, we're waiting for that sixty percent, you know, where is it? Like, when's it gonna come? And so when I met, I was like, well, where is this sixty percent? Oh, no, we're not gonna do that anymore. And so counselors weren't told. They were expecting it. Our students, you know, they weren't expecting it, but that would be a good thing and it was something that they were going to do. And just having like this position taken by our member, just erase that. And I think that again, just reflect on it. I don't want to give you too much, but just like, is that really what we want to do? Is that how we want to work together? Is that how we want to communicate with our employees? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We will move on to item seven, public comments. For items not on the agenda, no public comments. All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. Um, this is an action item.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
You, you could say I second.
You second that.
There's been a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? Vice President Kuziak?
Yeah, I just two items on here really um, caught my attention. I just wanted to bring attention to them. I really was happy uh, to see, to read through the Castro Valley Adult and Career Education Courses Study Outlines. It was just, just to understand what, what, what happens at our, at our adult school. It was really helpful to read the course outline, what, what's the content of it. So I want to just, I appreciated that part of my consent agenda. And also very excited about the Crescendo Education Group. Joe Feldman, um, that's like one of the first things I read like my first week when I was on the board about equitable grading. It's really great. That we're taking this to the next level and we'll be engaging throughout the district on these conversations. So, Mia, thank you and um, I'm really excited about that.
Thank you, trustee Kuziak. I thought you were gonna mention how you're so happy that we're excusing your absence, but we, we are.
There's no objections. No one pulled it from the consent agenda.
So glad to have you back. Welcome. So the motion's been moved and seconded. Um, student board member Chilton, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak?
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes five zero. We will now be moving on to reports, discussions, and action items. Item nine A, approve the forty-five day budget revisions for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Assistant Superintendent, yeah?
Yes. Good evening. Um, so this is the presentation following the um, uh, state enacted budget, uh, that was signed by Governor Newsom on June twenty-seven. Uh, few slides here that I'm just gonna go over, um, that really not a whole lot of changes, but I am going to highlight the ones that are going to impact Castro Valley. So uh, just uh, four bullet points here, themes for the twenty-three, twenty-four. You're uh, well aware of this one. Uh, all eyes are watching the economy, tax, uh, using one-time revenue for uh, to, for ongoing cost of living adjustment and of course then one-time grants. Um, so let's um, look at our local control funding formula, which is um, where the bulk of our funding is coming from. So um, with the, that theme of using one-time funds to fund ongoing uh, COLA is that one point six billion dollars is um, be uh, one of one-time funds is being used to fund the eight point two-two percent that is actually funded. Um, so we will go over um, the reductions um, in the next few slides, but I just wanted to share with you the base grant, uh, how we get funded is really base grant. Um, then of course, then they add the COLA. Uh, there's a grade span adjustment as well as supplemental and concentration funds. For us, we get the supplemental funds. Other districts with um, unduplicated pupil percentage higher than um, about fifty-five percent or higher, they get the additional funding. So um, eight point two-two percent is also applied out, uh, not just the local control funding formula, but other categorical programs. Um, such as the mandate block grant, um, special ed will get the eight point two-two percent child nutrition. And of course, then, um, as mentioned earlier, um, about our adult, um, uh, adult program will also get um, the eight point two-two percent. So the one-time funds, um, so this is where the list of them. I'm going to just highlight the first two, arts, music, and instructional block grant as well as learning and recovery emergency block grant. So these were the two. The very first one, arts, music, and instructional materials discretionary block grant. Um, you'll see the governor's budget in January, he was proposing a one point two billion reduction and may revise, increase that to one point eight. And where we are as of the enacted budget is actually a two hundred million dollar reduction. This is really um, good um, because of the advocacy. We know that arts and music block grant, uh, we already assumed in our budget in twenty-two, twenty-three, so it would have been a really uh, huge reduction for us. Um, but in this case, it's two hundred million reduction as opposed to the one point eight billion uh, proposed in, uh, as of May revised. Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant, another grant that we already assumed all the money in our twenty-two, twenty-three uh, budget. Uh, this is the first that we've heard in May, uh, two point five billion reduction. Now it's down to one point one billion. There's an intent um, in the language that will restore this over three years. Um, should the money, more money comes in, um, it's, it's an intent um, language that he put in. And the rest of the um, ones on the list listed here are not uh, ones that we assume. Obviously, it's just the first two, just I just wanted to highlight those two. Uh, the SB one-one-four includes various changes to our, to our LCAP. So you, during COVID, we did a mid-year update, so it looks like starting this year, we are going, you're going, we're going to be presenting a mid-year update to you. Um, so that's on or before February twenty-eighth with the list of things that are going to be highlighted here, a mid-year outcome data, mid-year expenditure and implementation data. And of course, then um, related to English learner students, uh, accounting them separate from the English learner students. Um, and then the um, LEA-wide actions and expenditures must include metric to monitor intended outcome. So um, stay tuned for that. That is going to um, go um, uh, before you and um, before the February twenty-eighth deadline. Okay, so we talked about the two reductions earlier, and so this is just a recap of where we are as of forty-five day revised. So our LCFF, the eight point two-two percent uh, brings in about an additional one, seven point one million dollars of ongoing funds. Um, supplemental uh, gets a portion of that seven point one million. That's why it's, it's, it's a negative there. It's a transfer. We need to put that money into supplemental funds because we're required to put it in supplemental funds. So out of the seven point one million, we need to deduct one point, almost one point two million dollars to put into supplemental funds. The other block grant that I shared with you earlier, arts and music, the reduction is down to three hundred fifteen thousand dollars. It's a, this is a reduction of five point six instead of fifty percent. Um, learning recovery block grant, it's eight hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. It's a four, fourteen point five reduction instead of thirty-two percent. So um, this is a slide that we shared, uh, that I shared with you um, back in May. And so wanted to just update it just so you can see the, the changes uh, from May revised to forty-five day revised. So how I look at the COLA of eight point two-two percent, um, it is really after taking out the reductions and also a transfer to supplemental funds, the COLA that we're seeing really the um, is four point nine percent instead of the eight point two-two percent that, that um, that we know that he's funding. Um, that's a change from, um, again, may revise from one point seven percent to four point nine percent. So it's an additional three point one million dollars of one-time funds. The reason why it's three point one million dollars is because of those reductions for arts and music discretionary about block grant and learning. It's one-time funds. It's, that doesn't mean that we're getting that three million ongoing. It's just a one-time because we already assume these dollars in our budget. Okay, and then looking ahead, uh, we are still waiting for the um, the funds to come in because of the taxes that are not due until October. So um, what they, this is really what they call a risky budget, not knowing exactly how much we're going to get. Um, but the, the fact that he's already giving us an eight point two-two, not knowing how much uh, he's uh, taxes, uh, where the state is going to collect, it's really a risky budget for, you know, twenty-two, twenty, for twenty-three, twenty-four. So that this may impact depending on whether it's an increase or a decrease and the uh, as far as their projection, this is going to uh, impact the um, the governor's proposed budget in January. So we're staying tuned. We're, we're taking a look at that. And so what could potentially happen is the reserve withdrawals, right? Pullbacks of planned investments, which he does have. Um, and then of course, deferrals, which we um, we, you've heard a few years ago during COVID, he, we, we did um, go through a deferral for a full year and it took, it took the governor a couple of years to put uh, um, to eliminate all those deferrals. And so we, a lot of districts, including us, we did look at trying to borrow, see what we can do about borrowing from, from a bank or looking at other funds to actually make sure that we still are able to meet our, our payroll on a monthly basis. That's all I have for tonight.
So I just want to apologize. I haven't done my taxes yet. Um, so I promise I will soon. I just want to thank you for that one slide that really walks through the one-time funds. Um, it really clicked for me when I, I was adding that together. So that helped me really appreciate sort of the instability of this and the fact that they were one-time funds, right? So that, that's it. Thank you. I appreciate how you explain things.
Now, this is an action item and I do have to say, um, Mia, no, the next four are all having to do with personnel, so I can't let you vote on that, but just wanted to give you an FYI.
So I'll move approval of the forty-five day budget revisions.
Oh, I'm wrong. The budget you can.
Of the next three. Okay.
I was wrong.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Student board member Chilton, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak?
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes five to zero. We will now move on to item nine B, approve the personnel report.
Personnel report that we have certificate in classified and there are a long list from all sorts of different districts. Um, my previous district, we have a few members from there that also joined us this year and last year, so it's good to see all sorts of different bases come and join Castro Valley as well. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Zamora. This is an action item.
I move approval of the personnel report.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Vice President Kuziak?
I just wanted to thank you. I know you were recruiting over the summer and you had the job fair. Um, you, you've really taken our efforts for recruitment to the next level and I really appreciate how um, my kids had teachers today, so thank you.
Trusty Raymond.
Also was really, I loved seeing the hiring of so many arts positions. Thank you, Prop 28. It's, it's great to see those plans unfolding.
Student board member Chilton, your preferential vote. Oh, darn it, man. I swear, I will get this right for you this year. I promise. Trusty Raymond.
Yes.
Trusty Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes four to zero. Our next item is item nine C, adopt resolution for 23, 24, assignment other than major, minor.
So our team member has a multiple subject credential and they're gonna be teaching math. So we need to come to the board to give authorization for that person to teach math.
I move approval of resolution 0423 forward slash 24.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Trusty Raymond.
Yes.
Trusty Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
Yes, President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes four to zero. Our next action item is item nine D, adopt resolution 523, 24, assignment for speech, speech language pathology.
And so this team member has received the preliminary. Now it's the next time, the next step is to take their their credential. So they'll be working on their credential this year. So we're coming to the board to authorize this person to work in that capacity.
I'll move approval of resolution five dash 23 slash 24.
I'll second that.
Been moved in second. And is there any further discussion? Trusty Raymond.
Yes.
Trusty Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Kuziak.
It's President Whitaker.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes four to zero. We will now move on to item 10, board member comments and reports. Student member Chilton, is there anything else you'd like to share with us today?
I don't think so. I would just say I think everyone's really excited for the school year. Summer seemed like it went really fast, but I think once everyone got back on campus today, it was okay. And also homecoming comes really early this year. It's in September instead of October. So I think everyone's getting pretty excited for that. And we are announcing our homecoming theme tomorrow.
I was gonna say, we always ask, but you can't tell us. Not fair.
It is yet, but at our retreat, we narrowed them down to three. One of them was Mario Kart, which is Quinton's favorite. Another one is music genres. And then the third one is under the blank. It could be like under the stars, under the Friday night lights. And then we made a QR code for it and posted it at registration. So the students could vote on it.
That's cool. Technology. Thank you.
Trusty Raymond.
Yeah, well, it's nice to be back and working again and serving the community again. Welcome to Ms. Chilton. I, I just, there are no dumb questions. All right. I'm, I am a little happy to not be the newest person up here though anymore. So, you know, we'll, we'll work together. It'll be okay. I was able to, I feel like I did a few things this summer. Just completely blanking on what right now. It was great to send my kids off to school this morning, seventh grade and ninth grade. Everyone was remarkably glad to go. So that was nice. And so as a parent and as a board member, it was great to see the schools working and everyone showing up. And there was a lot of great energy in the air. And so hopefully we'll be able to carry that all forward for another year right here.
Thank you, Trusty Raymond. Trusty Howard.
Yeah, so it was seemingly a short summer, but nevertheless, I was, once again, Castro Valley Sanitary District put on a lunch for the custodians up at Canyon and I was able to attend that. It went very well as it always does and they honor the custodians, which is terrific. Also got to visit a bunch of the custodians at their work site at the various schools, not all of them this year, but many of them. I visited the summer schools, most of them, and that was, went actually very well. I was really impressed by that. And I also toured PlayCV one day. And they just have a really spectacular summer program. It was really incredible. I was able to go back another day and visit PlayCV with Eric Swalwell. And that was a, a good visit. And good for him to be able to see our students coding and programming computers. I went to the, we had a chamber mixer at the adult school, which is well-attended and went well. And it's always good to get the adult school in that mix. And finally, last week I attended the first Eden Area ROP board meeting. And the big takeaway there is they're fully staffed this year, which is really terrific for them. I know it's a challenge for Raoul and for us, but they have an additional requirement. They not only have to have a teaching certificate, they also have to have a CTE certificate. So finding, and you're in competition against construction companies and other people that pay a lot of money. So the fact that they're fully fully staffed is really terrific. And Superintendent Torpey is doing a terrific job over there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trusty Howard. Vice President Kuziak.
It was a lot of fun to go and say hello to our new teachers over at the high school. I was there for some comic relief. I always appreciate the quality of the pastries from Seven Hills Bakery. So it was great to be there. And that let me sneak over to freshman orientation. My, my eldest is a freshman and he's looking after him. And welcome to the board, Indy. But it, it was really gratifying to have two very happy kids come home today from middle school and high school, talking about their first day at school and just really happy to be there. So happy that our schools are open again.
Thank you, Vice President Kuziak. Superintendent Amati.
I don't have anything. I do wanna, I forgot to say that on August 25th at seven o'clock at the football game is when we are going to unveil the Joe Brosnan plaque and things like that. So I know you got an invitation for a separate event that the family is doing for something that's separate, but the official one where we will unveil is at the football game on the 25th at seven o'clock.
Thank you, Superintendent Amati. And I worked all summer. So I feel like it's, I, I hope you all had fun, enjoyed yourself. Glad everyone had a great first day. I'm glad that Indiana is here to join us. I know it's gonna be a lot of fun. Welcome to our community. And I was really excited. I know Superintendent Amati mentioned it to just say hello to our staff and teachers and really kick it off. It's always great to see them fresh and excited, rested, ready to go. And so just sending out another welcome to them virtually. We can't wait to see what you do this year for our kids. We hope our families are getting things, you know, going and are enjoying themselves as well. Probably nice to have a little bit of a break sometimes. And we can't wait to have fun with you this year and, and see all the activities and the fun stuff and the engagements. So with that, welcome Castro Valley. And I bid you all a good night.